Okay, item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. I don't believe we have anything. Item four, considered minutes of previous meetings. We have none. Item five, receive and review correspondence and documents. The first one being minutes, meeting minutes from the sewer treatment plant project. Susan?
Yes, our July 12th meeting, we have a couple left. Substantial completion is supposed to be achieved by August 14th with final completion within 30 days after that. The plant is already operating secondary treatment. We have had an issue with receipt of some waste from the septic hauling company that discharges that, whose pretreatment system was not working too well. We're working through issues related to that because the volume of septic discharged at once from that can upset the bugs at the plant. It's different. Primary treatment is a much simpler process. Secondary treatment is much more complex and the bugs in the digester have to be happy in order for it to work. But our engineers are working and the owners of the company are being very cooperative, so things are going pretty well.
Okay, item B, notification of a dangerous tree on tax-acquired property. Map 32 lot 60.
Mr. Bowlen was in to see me in regard to a dangerous tree that is on map 32 lot 60, which is a property that is in foreclosure with the town. We've not sold it or taken possession of it. However, Mr. Bowlen was advised that, by his insurance company, that in order for him to have coverage under, he has to have notified the owners of the property of the dangerous tree so that if something happens, it's, they had warning and could have rectified it. And then the owners, one of those is us, would be responsible for damages if something occurred. This is a foreclosed property that has not been responsive. My intent is to send them a letter telling them they need to pay their taxes or other property will be sold. It's seven years' old years.
Will you start that process after tonight?
This week.
Thank you.
Actually, upon receipt of this letter, which is substantiation for not, the town doesn't need any more legal liability from this property and this tree is now an issue for us in case it comes down in a storm.
Is that something we can take down? Where we don't have possession of the property?
Well, we could do it except we incur costs for the, for that, that-
Is it that big we'd have to have an arborist?
We'd probably have to have the tree guy take it down. It's not, it's not a small tree. And that adds to the already, if we do that, it doesn't, there's no incentive for the owner to take care of the tree or the taxes because we've resolved the problem.
Any other questions? We'll go on to item C, weekly construction memo for 7/21/17.
Yeah, that's just the report of the work that the Apex Construction has been doing on the treatment facility.
Okay, item D is notice of service. Bucksport Motel Properties Incorporated versus the town of Bucksport. Susan?
That's a copy of the, of the claim filed against the town by Bucksport Motel Properties in regard to the permanent easement that the town took for the walkway.
Could you send me a copy of that or put it in my box?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, item E is sewer discount request from Dean or Sheehan.
Received a note in the mail from a lady who asked that, indicated that the town should consider giving senior citizens on a fixed income a discount on the sewer bill and the They've included it because we've received it, but we've looked pretty extensively at sewer rates and have made some adjustments to make minimums consistent and to not charge minimums for lots that had no buildings. But we haven't gone further to start to differentiate any further. If you, if you give discounts to people in one age group, you up rates on people in other age groups. There's really no, especially in the sewer system, sewer treatment system, there's no real way to offset that otherwise. But the letter's in here, I did receive it, it's-
Do we know if that person's in arrears at all or?
I did not, I did not look up her.
Okay, thanks. She didn't mention it in her letter, so.
No, I looked it up though.
Thanks.
Okay, any questions on any of those? We're going to item six, which is new ordinances to be considered or introduced.
We've got a public hearing tonight on section K down at the bottom, but we've worked on some other ordinances last night in the committee and we'll be bringing those forward later on.
Okay. Item seven, discussion items for managers clarification or direction or council discussions. A being 21 Colby Crossing, property foreclosure. Susan?
This, this was on the agenda last time and I apologize for not being at the last meeting. I haven't missed one in 36 years and I did, but I, it was unavoidable. Okay, the history of this, this property with the current record owner and his sister who lives on the property is, the property is in foreclosure has been since the 2014 taxes foreclosed in 2015, 2015's foreclosed in 2016. And the neighbors, abutters to this property, the property was once one whole piece. It had a house on the front and this in the back. It was split. The front lot with the main house went to foreclosure through a bank and was sold to Crystal Duda. And when they had the property surveyed to reflect their deed, discovered that the deed included half the mobile home that was on the second lot, that the lot line that had been deeded to them severed the mobile home. The lot line was not where it was assumed to be. At, that's a legal issue in the lot line for the property with the trailer and the property that's owned by Ms. Duda. And so complicating this was the fact that that second lot with the trailer is foreclosed by the town. So I notified the last record owner that since there was a legal issue regarding these lot lines, that we did the 30 days to, the 30 days to pay all tax costs and interest to avoid the town taking action, further action on this property. And during that 30-day period, Ms. Allen, who lives on that property, came in and I told her at the time that the best thing that she could do in that 30-day period was to get her brother to sign the property over to her, pay the taxes, and the town was out of this discussion because it would have been resolved within 30 days. That was it. That didn't happen. And after the 30 days had elapsed, Ms. Allen was in and told her that in order for the town not to, for me not to recommend this property being sold to be butter with a lot line issue, that they would need to get together with Ms. Duda and come to some agreement that settled the line issue so that the legal work was done on this and then if that had, was done, I would recommend that it went back to them. That has not occurred. What I don't want the town to have to do is pay to have a legal solution to a lot line dispute because we're a record owner on that property. And unless we divest ourselves of this property, that's where we are. And since the last meeting, where I understand the prior owners are, they've not been in. They've not come to see me on this issue at all. It was my understanding at the last meeting that Ms. Duda was, it was recommended that she see an attorney and get a, which she did, provided us with a letter on this. I would prefer that it, that she not file civil suit in Superior Court involving the town. And that's, that's where this goes because we're an owner at this point if this property remains the way it is.
Are the parties capable of agreeing where the line is, but they just can't get, they just haven't signed a boundary line agreement? Or do you know?
No.
Could you come up and stand up here for us, please? Thanks.
When I went to Ms. Allen about the issue, she sort of laughed and said, "I bet you didn't know you had tenants." And I was like, "Well, no, I didn't." And so I called the attorney because my original intent was to sell her that it's 70 by 150 feet, which she's occupying. So my original intent was to sell her that land. I have no issues with them. I mean, we have a fence up, but the attorney advised, because we have a mortgage, we have to go through our title company. We are unable to do anything without, otherwise we can void our insurance. I'm not willing to do that for her, especially considering I don't think she has the means to purchase the land from me if she hasn't paid her taxes. And it's something that I feel terrible about, but I'm also, I have three young kids. I'm, I'm not willing to risk their future and our home for this. So there, I mean, she came to me the night before the last council meeting and she told me that she had gone to sue. She, she talks out of both sides of her mouth. She tells me her boyfriend makes $5,000 every two weeks and we can pay that in a week. I said, "So why didn't you send him the check?" And then she says, "They wouldn't take my money." So I'm here, she, she's not a very reliable witness, which is why I originally had gone to an attorney because I didn't want to end up in trouble with trying to sell her something privately and her not pay us, which is where I thought this would go.
Quick question, excuse me, quick question. If this, if we take this, it has to go into bid, correct?
No.
We could sell it to somebody?
Because the abutter has, the, the property that we're in question with has a legal dispute over line, the, the only people we can sell it to is that, without selling a legal issue to another party, which is not, which is why in this instance, it would be to the abutters whose land has been impacted by this issue.
Who owns the trailer?
It's on, it's on Duane's-
It's on half of, it's half and half, so.
But I mean, does the trailer belong to you and you rent it to them?
No, 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 the trailer is-
It's a separate parcel property.
Is a separate parcel, it's on, it's encroaching onto our land.
When the, when the property was split and things were put in different places, I'm not sure how much care was taken.
Well, she told me, I'm sorry to interrupt, but she told me that the original intent was always to take down the trailer. So I think when they split the lines, they weren't paying attention because they didn't care. And then they got in trouble and couldn't do anything because the bank owned my house. And because of that, they couldn't, at that point, change the lot line, so they just never said anything.
Is anyone living in the trailer?
Barbara is.
And you say they're in arrears back to 15? They're in arrears back to 14?
14. And the, the idea that someone refused money is, is not, no one came in and offered to pay off anything. The, historically, someone had come in right before things foreclosed, but this was two years beyond that. And that didn't happen and they were going to come in and put money on it. And we're told that that wasn't, that wouldn't save it, it needed to be, to get the town's name off the deed that needs to pay off.
It seems, it seems that we are running into a pile of issues every time we have these delinquent taxes. You know, earlier this summer, this spring, we had the gentleman come in that was, had the issue with the other person. I'm of the opinion that at some point, we, we go forward with the, with the process and then a lot of these things take, they either come in and pay or they don't. I'm getting tired of us being the nice folks all the time and we seem to get put out and we end up solving property disputes that we should have no purpose in doing.
I'm not recommending that you get involved in a property dispute. I'm not.
No, but we're here though. I mean, we're here now with it. I mean, I don't want to either, but I'm, I'm, I'm getting to the point where people are starting to get in arrears and they're, they're taking advantage of our good nature, I guess is the best way to put it, and we end up with situations like this.
The property owner for this parcel has another property that's more delinquent than this one, that's also going to be coming to you because he's been notified of that as Neither of these parcels are his primary residents. One's his sister and one's a rental. And in between the two of them, there are in arrears $17,000 in taxes. So the idea that-
Everybody out here is putting the bill on that and that's what, that's what I'm getting tired of.
I agree.
You know, I, I think it's to the point where for us to take action on this and to go forward with the process, maybe that pushes people to come in and, and pay their bills. But I am, I am tired of having people come in here and we're discussing property dispute some of the people because they're not paying their taxes. I'm, I'm just almost at the end of that. That's where I stand.
This is the discussion. This is where, I, I wasn't here last time to give you my, what I had been done thus far with this.
Just so I understand this, down on H, that would be us approving a sale of, to her?
That's correct. And, and there's no-
Oh, the trailer.
The lot, the whole, the property.
Just, just the lot itself, not the trailer.
The property.
It's not a mobile. It's a modified mobile. And the way the lawyer described it to me is now, if, if we purchase this land, we will have to either dismantle, like they'll, we'll have to give them a certain number. He explained, because it's anything mobile, they can take because-
Sure, yeah.
Otherwise, we have to give them a notification and it's a long process, from my understanding.
So we sell the property and we're out of the mix?
We're out of it. We, we, it's as is where, the town has no rule in eviction that-
In terms of the boundaries, I'm safe because I own the entire lot. So I don't have to take out anything against my title company.
And so tell me again, why, why would we not want to do that? What's the downside to doing it?
Why would we not want to do?
Sell the property?
It didn't-
No, I'm just, I'm just, don't say it's your talent.
No, no, I, I, the downside, well, if there's a downside, it's that the current record owners lose it.
But they're, we, we foreclosed on them.
That's correct.
And we own it now. They've had ample of time to pay for their, pay for their property.
Yes.
And he has two, two properties that are delinquent.
This one and 23 Oak Street.
I mean, I think I come down this, this Peter, the same side as Peter, that we reach the point where we, you know, we, we do the best we can to, to give people time and over and over again, we end up in the same position.
If I hadn't had the discussion with her during the 30-day period that said, "This is how you avoid this. Either pay it and work it out with your brother after or get him to sign it over to you and pay it and we're out of it either way." But I was very clear in the letter to them and the follow-up that, that we're, the town isn't going to get mired in a legal dispute for a property that is in foreclosure to the tune of $6,000 and change because that just adds to the cost that somebody else is going to pay for.
Is the purchaser of the property an idea that you're willing to look into or is that-
I do want to purchase it. I'd rather not take out a, because apparently a title claim is not easy as well.
What with her, the following stuff for her, she'd have to take care of the residents that live in there now of some, as far as-
It would not be the town's responsibility to do an eviction or to do, town's quit claim, meaning they, it satisfies the tax cost and interest portion and anything else becomes the responsibility of the purchaser. And that's true in any foreclosure that the town participates in.
You're financially in a position to purchase this?
Yes.
Any other questions? Any comments from anyone? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. We're taking that up later in the agenda items. Okay, we're going on to the agenda items right now. Item A being adopt, resolve 2018-05 to approve sewer commitments for April 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2017.
Motion to approve, second.
We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, to adopt, resolve 2018-6 to approve the main municipal association voting ballot for 2017 as recommended by the nominating committee.
Motion, second.
We have a second, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to adopt, resolve 2018-7 to approve the acceptance of LRAP funds in the amount of $62,180 from the main department of transportation for the 2017, 2018 year.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
Is there any match in or catch or anything with this or is this just money?
$62,000.
Just an offset for us?
I'm sorry, $63,172 is the total and there's no match. It's just direct money.
It's just the direct money.
This is the highway.
It used to be called URA, Urban Rural Initiative Program, and now it, before that it was local road assistance and now it's local road assistance again, so.
Do we need this one again?
That goes with the fund that was-
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, anything further from the public, from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item D, to adopt, resolve 2018-8 to accept the fiscal year 2016 Safer Grant Award for two full-time positions for three years.
Motion to approve. Second.
We got a second over here?
Yes.
Okay. We got a motion and a seconded. Anything further from the public? From the council?
Just one thing major. Very good job on that. That's going to help. Sir, may I, can we hold this?
Have you run the numbers to see where we're going to be? Do you have those numbers available for us or?
The grant itself is $244,069.
Right.
The match over three years is approximately $150,000, give or take, which-
There's going to be an offset though with the overtime that we're spending.
There is going to be an offset. So it's not going to be entirely, but we knew it wasn't. We talked about going to perdu and some other things, but it's going to mitigate the impact to that money.
It's going to help to allow the end of the employees to-
And it may allow us to go to the transfers that we talked about, which is another income.
Yeah, that's going to add more revenue.
That's another offset.
When will this take effect?
We have 30 days, oh, was it 180 days?
We got 180 days. So the period of performance starts first week of January and we'll go three years from that point. So we got 180 days. We got a, we'll have to meet, we'll have to have a committee probably and set up what we're going to do. It changes the whole scheme of our scheduling and we'll have to meet with the union folks and come up with some issues there. So probably in the next few weeks, we'll have to start that process and then this will advertise for the two, the two new positions.
We got flexibility in the budget for this, right?
Thank you, Greg.
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one of my concerns is, Chief, is that, of course, there's no discussion about the pros and cons of that at this stage because we're sort of getting the money thrown at us, which is always nice when people are throwing money at us. But that doesn't mean there wouldn't be some discussion about whether it's necessary to keep these people. I know you're, you're going to keep them busy, but that's still going to be a process that we're going to have to go through at the end of three years.
That will, that will be the stipulation of, of the hiring process.
Right.
I can sit here and guarantee you that in three years, you'll see that it was well worth it and it will have to be maintained at that point by the town.
Hope blooms eternal, yeah.
I don't see any other route.
We'll have the discussion later, sure.
Thanks, Greg.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item E, to adopt, resolve 2018-9 to establish six additional parking spaces on Main Street with signage indicating two-hour parking.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a second over?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, we, we have motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
That two-hour parking, was that specific hours or is that 24 hours a day?
That's, that's no overnight, but it's two-hour parking.
So it's two-hour?
Yes.
Okay.
And does this also establish that electric car charging?
Next one.
Okay. Got to look down further.
Stay with us, man. Stay with us.
Way ahead of you. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Here we go. To adopt, resolve 2018-10 to approve the use of one parking space in a municipal parking lot next to the House of Pizza for use as an electric vehicle charging station.
So, second.
We have motion and a second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public?
Yes, hi, this is Mr. Peter Junior and I wanted to tell everybody this is great because this will probably put us on the map. The owner of Smartwise, me and him have been promoting Bucksport as a place to come to live and, you know, charge your electric car and stuff. And part of my, my, my stance on this is that it's going to bring a lot of people into this town. So I just wanted to say, congrats guys, let's get this done.
All right. Any other comments from the public, from the council?
Do we have a timeline when this may, or do we even know who?
The delay in this has been that when it was originally discussed, it was supposed to come by a resolve and it got left off the agenda as a resolve. So it should be-
So we have somebody that's going to do it in this?
The gentleman, the person that owns the business adjacent to it wants to, is going to pay for the whole thing.
Okay.
Now, he's get, I remember talking, when we were down there talking to him, he's got, he's got a propane tank there that might need to be relocated.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item G, to approve, resolve two thousand eighteen dash eleven to approve the use of seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents from the recreation equipment reserve for improvement to town fitness facility at the Jewett School. Would you like to come up and?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to thank the council for the consideration on this.
And who are you?
My name's Nick Tomosco. Thanks for having me. I'd like to take a moment to talk briefly about some of the benefits of our new partnership with YMCA. We're really happy to be providing some really quality swim lessons this year in partnership with the Down East Family YMCA Dolphins. The ratios of students to instructors this year has far exceeded the recommended best practices. We've hosted two barbecues so far that were really well attended. We plan on hosting two more up there at the municipal pool. Our final barbecue, we're gonna pair with a special event we're hosting with the Health Center. So we're really happy to be collaborating with different businesses in town. We plan on giving a detailed report to the council after the summer season about pool usage and some recommendations about facility needs to really improve that space. We've offered several specialty enrichment camps and we're happy to be collaborating with the Great Lawn Land Trust hiking program coming up. Our summer date camp is consistently performing at about twenty-five kids a week and we've got people traveling from Penobscot and Blue Hill to attend that camp. We've scholarship nearly a thousand dollars so far and we're only halfway through the summer, so we're looking to double that number. Folks, we're getting geared up for a fully licensed after-school program this fall, which we're really excited about and we've started the licensing process already. Our fall session newsletter was, was gonna go out about mid-August and the hope is that we'll give people a chance to register early, really get the word out on the programs we're offering and get more people in the community involved in recreation. We're working very closely with our advisory committee right now on what the gaps are in programming here in the community and how we can fill those and that kind of leads into the exciting opportunity we have with our fitness center. Our advisory committee recently approved the proposal that we handed to you guys for the weight room upgrades and we're happy to pass that over to you. This was based on a full detailed presentation that outlined sustainability plan and kind of the recommended updates for the space. We're happy to answer any questions you guys might have about that proposal.
Are you, are you bringing in new equipment?
Yes, sir.
A lot, a lot, I mean?
Reupholstering old equipment, bringing on some new equipment, kind of changing the layout of the space.
And you're moving the space also, correct?
Moving the space also, for safety considerations.
Is the space gonna be next to your office?
Yes.
Got that big conference room there?
The big conference room and we're gonna put down the rubberized mats. I don't wanna get too into the weeds, but really revamp the space, but also have somebody on duty until late at night, CPR, first aid certified, somebody that can pump someone's chest if they need it, rather than have people wait down at the other end of the school unsupervised.
This is the exercise room that's in the Jewett School we're talking about, right?
Yes, sir.
It's moving it to the conference room, I understand.
And this is coming out of the equipment reserve account.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you, Nick. We have a motion and a second to approve the...
Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
To approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? Mr. Key?
No, not on this. No, I did have a question on something else. I want you to take the vote. I don't think we've voted yet on this, have we?
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. All right, we're going to item H, to adopt, resolve two thousand eighteen dash oh four to approve the sale of foreclosed property at map three, lot one, at twenty-one Kobe Crossing.
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolve.
The resolve is not in your packet and the resolve would...
I was gonna say, I couldn't find it.
I was gonna say, you can't. The report, the resolve would be to sell the property to Crystal Duda for all outstanding tax costs and interest due on the property, which takes us through the seventeen, eighteen assessed taxes, as is where is quitclaim deed.
Is there a time limit on that? Not that I don't think that you do it, I'm just, is there a time limit that we have on those, or, I mean, is it?
You can put a time limit with, you know, that in order for this to go through the...
I'm just wondering, I mean, you want to get this, she wants to get this taken care of sooner than later, so if, you know, if it's... So if it's a fourteen day, I, I would put fourteen days on it, yeah.
Now, who takes care of all the legal issues with this?
There's no, the only, the only thing the town does is prepare a quitclaim deed and send that to the registry along with our foreclosure costs.
Okay, we have a motion and a seconded. Anything further from the public? Further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item nine, resignations, appointments, assignments, or elections. I don't believe we have anything. Item ten, approve quitclaim deeds and dis, or quitclaim deeds, discharges of deeds, first one being sewer quitclaim deed for Sandy Migno and Brian Knows at nine Spruce Street. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the quitclaim deed for sewer claims. Anything from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item B, tax quitclaim deed for Troy Carey and Terry Snow at one thousand five Silver Lake Road. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second to pre, approve the tax quitclaim deed. Anything from the public? Council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item eleven, town manager's report.
I attended a meeting with the Department of Human Services on Monday of this week in regard to request for continued funding of the Thriving in Place program of the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition. State personnel with their representatives from the Healthy Community Coalitions also attended. State personnel requested additional information in regard to that program and its outcomes in order to consider funding this. It's been funded prior to this for three years through the Main Health Access Foundation, which is no longer funding the program. They were, they were very positive about what Bucksport has done, but wanted more data. I want to thank everybody who worked so hard to make the Bucksport two hundred and twenty-fifth Bucksport Bay Festival twentieth celebration such a success. Even the weather cooperated. What were the odds we were gonna get three days of sunshine to make it a great event? Special thanks to Shelby Wright, the event coordinator, for her efforts to bring together such a wide variety of offerings for the weekend and as always, the hard work of the Bucksport Bay Area Chamber of Commerce staff, Leslie Wambacher and Alicia Smith. I've heard from a lot of people who really enjoyed things and while there were some, who said some things have gone, could have gone better, there virtually everyone found something in the, in the two days and three days of, of events to enjoy and the fireworks were spectacular and so it was a great event. There, Shelby raised more money through sponsorships than was anticipated in the budget. They're still getting that in and when that's all settled out, anything over and above what was budgeted to be received will be reimbursed to, to the town for the amount that you had appropriated, so. And the town did not expend the entire forty thousand dollars that was appropriated already, so more money will be coming back on that. An organizational conference call was held today for the start of the EPA grant for the AIM property. Elan Consulting was selected as the primary consultant for the project and will be organizing local meetings to gain input from residents and businesses in regard to this project. Already talked about the treatment plant. The Senior Resource Committee accesses the Oversight Committee for the town's status as an A A R P, age-friendly community, and one of the components of that status is the commitment to look at housing needs of older residents. The Senior Resource Committee would like input from the council on how they would like a housing committee structured and who might be involved in the evaluation of a wide range of housing options that might be developed in the community. And I say in the community, not by the community, but in looking at whether housing cooperatives or senior citizen housing or assisted, what types of things are needed. The Senior Resource Committee is, is happy to do this work, but wants some other members of the committee so, to look at these options. So are there any counselors who are interested in, in the, the housing, housing planning issues for seniors they'd be interested in? Or if there are residents who are interested in this as a subject as well, who would like to step forward and, and participate in this discussion, then they could be involved also if the counselor's on board with looking at this subject.
Can we send you an email?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
I completed the information form for Gilman Electric to use to complete paperwork for Efficiency Maine for our exciting LED projects. We'll be doing these in phases. The first phase is going to be the waterfront walkway lights and fixtures, our test fixtures, the night sky ones down adjacent to the bridge coming this way. Extremely successful, but doing exactly what we had hoped they would do for about four hundred dollars less of light bulb than we would have had to replace them with. That walkway is first, the town office will be second and the public safety building will be third. The, we did not have the rebate information on the LED lights for the walkway prior to, I got that today. The cost of the bulbs is ninety dollars, but there's a sixty-five dollar rebate on each bulb. So it dramatically reduces the LED cost to have those on the walkway and the hats that go inside the are approximately seventies. So for a net of approximately a hundred dollars a, a light, you will have long-term good night sky visible. So that's it, moving forward. I would like to thank Pat Ranzoni for bringing me a copy of her book, Still Mill. It is a wonderful tribute to those who paid such a, played such a role in this community's heritage and if you haven't seen the book, you should get a copy and read it. It's, it's pretty fascinating. And the final bit of good news is the additional state funding for RSU twenty-five has resulted in a reduction of our school payments over, under what we budgeted in the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-four cents. So for the third year in a row, we're going to have money to carry into next year's budget as an offset to education. If you remember, two years ago, it was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand that they sent back that came in extra from the state. Last year, there was an error in their warrant articles and we were left with a hundred and sixty-four thousand, which we carried forward into this year and next year, we will have a hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-four cents to carry into this, as an offset to the school budget for next year.
I think I mentioned it before, the poles with the streetlights, those are owned by us or is CMP or?
The ones on Main Street?
Yeah.
Those are owned by Central Main Power.
So if we were, wanted to do an LED project with those, long-term, obviously it's a long-term thing, it would have to be a discussion with CMP and?
There are several communities in the state who have, who have done that, who are undertaking the, the ownership of streetlights. That, that isn't something I've done research into, but we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel if we wanted, if you wanted to look at how that works. The, my initial goal is to get the, get everything to LED and the walkway taken care of and then certainly looking at...
It might be something to put in a long, long-range plan to do, you know, in stages down the road so it doesn't become overwhelming in any one year or two years or three years, but...
Any questions on any of those items tonight? If not, we'll go on to item twelve, to set public hearings or hold public hearings and approve of any licenses or permits. First one going to be a public hearing. Shall an ordinance be adopted, title amendment to appendix K of the Bucksport Town Code, such ordinance being for the purpose of establishing retail marijuana establishments and retail marijuana social clubs as prohibited uses in the, in the, in the town. Declare the public hearing open. Any comments from the public on this item? Anything from the council? If not, declare the public hearing closed. How would the council like to proceed? We have a motion and a second to approve the change to the ordinance to adopt a title of, shall an ordinance be adopted, title amendment to appendix K to the Bucksport Town Code. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we do have a license, right, Kathy? Miscellaneous license for American Cruise Lines Incorporated, American Star, Independence, American Constellation to grant permission to sell and dispense alcoholic beverages aboard the vessel. I believe this is required if they are at our dock.
Motion approved, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the miscellaneous license. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item thirteen, discussion items not on the agenda for the council, the public. We'll open it up to the public first. Any, any discussion items from the public? Yes, sir.
Back on the last agenda item, there's one public hearing that needs to be scheduled. Last night, the ordinance committee reviewed the, another amendment to appendix K of the Sherland Regulations and they approved those amendments. So the ordinance has been introduced, now it needs to go to public hearing, so that needs to be scheduled.
Okay, that's on the next item down. Any other discussion items from the council?
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Mayor, I would like to add my congratulations to Pat Ranzoni. Every town should have a history like she put together from the citizens, a lot of the citizenry. Most of the people, a lot of the people, we all know, it's a broad spans of people that contributed to this and it's really quite a book, something for our children and grandchildren to read as time goes by. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the, the woman who heads up Wednesday's On Main here in dear to my heart, managed to get the new director of the Grand Theater in Ellsworth to go over and talk, he met with folks at the Alamo, with Jim Boothby and toured the Bucksport Performing Arts Center. He's very excited about doing some stuff. I don't know if you knew about this or not, Nick, but next summer, he's promised a drama school for two weeks in Bucksport, which is, I mean, we're pretty well up to speed on sports programs and this drama school's gonna be a real addition, I think, that it's gonna be a great two-week program. So that's, that's pretty good. I think that's, yeah, I think that's all I had. Thanks.
I just have a question regarding this approval we just went through for American Cruise Lines that, that permission to sell and dispense alcohol beverages. Does that also allow them to purchase here, import and bring on the ship, or is that just?
You mean in volume, where they, where they would buy in volume from the liquor store and?
Well, wherever. I mean, I've, I've seen trucks come down, but can they now purchase in our town, you know? So they run short or something and they wanna go across to one of our, does that allow them to purchase quantities?
They can always purchase it. They just couldn't, they couldn't sell, you have to have a license to sell alcohol on it while it's tied up at our dock. That said, they can't drink it on their dock. They can only do it on their boat tied up to our dock.
But they can buy, if they wanna go up to Roanoke Wine and Design and buy four or five cases of wine and take it back, as long as they don't open it before they get it back there, it's legal. Okay, any other discussion items? Okay, item fourteen is upcoming public hearings, designation of topic for committee assignments and scheduling of committee meetings. I believe Jeff brought up a topic we have to hold a public hearing on.
For, for the Appendix K or the Chapter Two, Appendix K, okay, for the land for, for changing of zoning that we talked about last night.
And that'll be at the next council meeting?
Yes.
This is, that's the one that where DEP gave.
DEP gave a bunch of approvals.
Gave permission to relax the dimensional requirements on Main Street, so.
Also need to set a finance committee meeting?
We're gonna, do we have to go ordinance for any of those, Jeff, or?
Not right now.
Not right now, right? Yeah. I don't know what the truck bids we're talking about. What truck bids are we discussing?
There's a, a power truck replacement, he just wants to talk about.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, yeah, and signs, we wanted.
And signs, yes, yes, that'd be part of the finance also, but six-thirty will give us plenty of time.
Any other, any other designated topics for committee assignments? If not, we'll go to item 15.
Motion to adjourn, second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Don't wanna wait till Trump's ready.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's ready, man.
It's ready, I have to walk home.